I would like to call the planning board meeting for Tuesday, November 28th. It is 6:00 PM or 6:01 PM. By Mass General Law, we have to announce that you're being recorded and we may be going out live on the cable channel. First up, our administrative items. We have received the final draft of the short-term rental bylaw amendment for consideration, and we need to schedule a public hearing date. So, Michael, what would you suggest?
I would suggest that we schedule this for January 9th. So, just so you all know, the first step is, and this process is to formally submit the bylaws to the select board for their consideration. They would then return it to the board with any comments they may have within 14 days. And so, we need to do two things. We need to settle on the date, and I'd also like a motion from the planning board to forward the draft by law to the select board.
Okay. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'm not going to be here then, but I don't think I need to be. I will, I, is there a sequence that we forward at first and then have the public hearing?
No, so...
Were those two separate, independent?
They're separate, yeah. So, we're going to schedule the public hearing, and then we're going to forward it to the select board.
Those are independent, one not, not one after the other?
Okay, well, we'll need to have a formal warning, a formal posting of the, of the public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we set the public hearing for the short-term rental bylaw at January 9th. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need a motion to forward it on to the select board, right?
Yes, I move that we forward the short-term rental bylaw to the, to the select board.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Once you all have had some time to review the short-term rental bylaw as well, we can schedule a working session as well. We don't have to do that tonight, but that is something we can use that as an option moving forward. We would have to post that as we went for any other public meeting.
Well, I think we need to get that down tonight because there's not much time between now and January 9th. I think we only have one meeting, right? In December?
There's only, yeah, there's only one meeting in December, but the working session can be scheduled outside of a regular planning board meeting, and so, you know, I think that's something...
So, you want to schedule it for the 19th?
I'm not sure what everyone's availability is in December.
You're talking about December?
Yep.
December 19th, you said?
Yep. Does that work very?
Yeah, what timeframe were you talking about, late afternoon or?
We could do late afternoon or six o'clock, it depends, whatever everybody wants.
So, you're saying four o'clock?
Yeah, four o'clock works.
I can do that.
Yeah, I can do that.
Me too.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't need a motion?
No, I don't, we don't. So, it's not 6:15 yet, so we can't hear Westport Lakes yet, so let's go with, you can start the planner's report.
For the working session, you set 4:00 PM.
Please come in and find a seat if you can.
So, the first item in the planner's report is an update on our MVP 2.0 grant. We had our kickoff meeting with SERPAD and our equity consultant conditioning leaders last week on Monday, and so our next step for that grant is to build a demographic profile of the town to assess the full extent of who in town might be disproportionately affected by climate change, and so we'll use that assessment to help us develop a core team of community liaisons. So, right now, this is really, the phase of the project is really digging into data and assembling that profile, and then when we reconvene with SERPAD in January, then we'll really begin public engagement for that grant. The next item on the planner's report is our application to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This is a program that we applied for about a year ago, but we are just recently provided notice that the town will receive grant funds through MIMA, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, for hazard mitigation planning. We don't know the exact amount yet because this grant is being passed through from FEMA to MIMA and then to the town, so we don't have a contract yet. The original amount we had requested was nearly $20,000, and so hopefully we get that awarded in full.
And once we get it, do we know who we would pick for the consultant?
We don't. We would, we would have to put it out to a bid, yeah. And then finally on the planner's report is our, just a very, very brief update on our Route 6 rezoning. We are going to meet with our consultant, BSC Group, following our public meeting, which was hosted earlier this month. That meeting is Friday at 10:00 AM, so with Joan and Mark, just a reminder that we have that coming up.
This Friday?
This Friday.
It is still not 6:15, so topic's not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Yes? I don't think they are. Do we have legal counsel on the line yet?
No.
We have Amy. We could take it on Marco's to be honest. We're going to have it, yeah. So, we, we might wait for that, if you want. Are they going to come on live stream or just on the?
Yeah, she was invited to that.
About 6:15, yeah. So, we're going to suspend that.
Amy, do you have any updates while you're, while we're waiting here, anything?
I do not, no. I think Robin's done, actually, just, she just came, just joined the incident.
Okay, so we still have a few minutes. Might as well start.
So, we, we have a couple of issues on what we call mass highway curb cut permits.
Could you speak up, please?
Certainly. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, but, but all the other, please speak up.
Okay, all right. We need them to be quiet then. Sorry about that. Okay, so we have, we have a project in town, and I believe, I believe the attorney is also here that represent them, Coastal Healing, that we have, we have a problem with a mass highway curb cut permit. So, we're going to try to look to legal counsel to ask where, they've gone past the deadline to pave it, and I believe the town's on the hook right now, and they're refusing, they're refusing to pave it, and we're going to have to go in and pave it because we have an issue with settlement. So, we're trying to look and see what the procedure is on, we have surety on that project, so we're looking to get it paved so that the liability of town is limited. So, what's going on right now is this permit is, there's two different permits that the project needed, and I don't have, the applicant's permit is what they call a curb cut permit, and so that's filled out in the applicant's name. So, the permit that the town filled out is what you call a highway access for utilities. So, what needed to be done was the, the access to the utility was water and gas, so in accordance with DOT specifications and requirements, the utility is required to pull the access permit. So, a previous town administrator pulled, had field engineering, who was the owner's engineer, as the town's representative, pull the access permit on the highway. So, highway doesn't have any involvement in this, it's the water department, which the selectmen are the water commissioners, so rightly, we were to pull that permit. However, we don't have any licensing or bonding of subcontractors, and so, the owner's contractor installed it and then has refused to finish the pavement. So, now Mass Highway's, Mass Highway's requiring the job to be finished, and as of now, there's a settlement in the road, so we have to go in and repair it. So, we're just, there's also been two extensions, and I believe it was by Tim King, and the last extension was to, I mean, August 15th. So, Mass Highway has a deadline of November, November 15th, they don't let you go back in the highway without special permission. We have a settlement right now, so we need to go back and fix it before winter. So, we're looking to, I mean, ask legal counsel to review these permits and see what we should, what we should be doing, because, I mean, it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have been pulled on the highway. Highway's responsible right now, and the taxpayers are going to have to pay to do this patch unless we can, we can do something against the homeowner. I mean, the property owner, I should say.
So, so I think that basically, if the town does the work, and I think that what we should do tonight is decide whether or not we want to recommend to the select board, who are, is the water commission in this town, to do the work that the town signed off on and bill the applicant. And I believe that the bill being from the water department would run with the town, would run with the property even if they don't pay, but I would like some legal input perhaps on that. I, I think, to me, that seems to be the only alternative.
And that, we can, we can forward her that, like, we don't need a decision today, but forward of that and make a recommendation.
Well, we need to make a decision soon because the, the mecanum or the tar producers are kind of close.
Yeah, I mean, we, we actually are, and our DOT certified contractor right now, he's just about wrapping up, so it's something that needs to be done.
Has to be done right away.
Yes. Like, we're hoping like this week, but...
So, open for discussion on the board? What do you think? Should we recommend to the water department to do this and build the?
Yes, and we have surety, so we would have a guarantee, and also, you know, if that became difficult, it considers a lien on the property, but a unpaid water bill.
Okay. I would like a motion to that effect.
I've moved that we recommend that the, to the board of selectmen sitting in the water commissioners, that the town undertake this work and build the landowner.
Second?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's one specific, so, we'll do the other one later. Okay, now, it is 6:17, and it's time for the public hearing on Westport Lakes. And I want to just make, since we have a full house here, I want to make a note regarding the conduct of this public, these public hearings. When the floor is opened for public comment on the proposal, those commenting will be provided a maximum of five minutes to provide their input. All comments should be addressed to me as the chairperson of the planning board. To ensure that the hearing is completed in a timely fashion, we encourage those speaking to not repeat concerns that have already been submitted for consideration. And so, we would like also to keep the comments to, to, through the chair about the applicant and not about people or things of that nature, so...
About the application.
About the application. So, it's Westport Lakes ILF, or ILF, which stands for Independent Living Facility, file number 23-036SP-ILF. This is a request by the applicant to consider a special permit for assisted living and independent living facility and site plan approval for a plan entitled Westport Lakes Assessors Map 31 Lots 3B, 3C, and 4G, Westport, Massachusetts, for 30 townhouses and four single-family type homes. There was a pre-application on November 15th, and the minutes are available for those who would like to, to hear them. So, Mr. Corey?
Good evening, I'm the development team for...
This is standing right in the way of, of the floor. In the forward or backward?
I will be out of your way to sit. Good evening, we're here on our application. It's been filed under the Independent Living bylaw. This facility will be comprised again of 52 buildings that are going to be duplexes, and fourth, it will be standalone units. Of those, we've, we would be providing a certain number, as provided under the bylaw, 50% of subsidized, approximately nine, nine of the units would be subsidized, meaning that they would be available at a reduced rate to residents of Westport. These units themselves are designed in a way that minimizes the impact on the, or adjacent farmland, which would be this way, and open space, which is to the west. The clustering of the buildings takes into account the minimum setback requirements between the duplexes as required by fire code, which would pass, was deemed 20, in Westport was 20 feet, although there are units that do, that are approximately 34 feet apart. It features a community center where the facility residents will be, and only facility residents will be able to utilize along with a community garden that will be governed by the condominium, condominium documents. The roadway itself is an extension where it follows the pathway to the west of an ancient way that was declared an ancient way during the prior process when this was going to be a planned golf course. The ancient way itself actually extends, as the planning board may remember, I think we have one person left on the planning board that was here during that golf course process, extends to the west to an adjacent parcel, which then went both north and south. West, Westport Lakes Drive is another ancient way, which was known as the highway, which was actually the main connector for travel to the, at the county seat in the town. So, again, we're utilizing adjacent or relatively features which have been in existence for quite some time. You notice that there are additions and modifications subject to our last meeting have been made in an attempt to address both SW calls and the town planners' concerns with regards to open space. We feel that the application does meet the requirements, so will be an asset to the town of Westport. This project does not represent a negative tax situation as a standard subdivision or a 40B subdivision would to the town. The income from this, this development would have very little impact on town services. If you look at Oak Ridge and the villages, neither one of them has a substantial impact, only a positive impact on the financial situation for the town. As a 55 and older development, the idea of limiting the size of the units to two bedrooms, this is a very practical and financially viable solution to some of Westport's housing needs, has zero school impact. We feel it's a good project. Tonight with me, we have Brian Poffatt and Chris Vanderburg from CEC, who will be continuing the presentation and discussing the technical aspects that were brought up by this project, SW calls and town planners' requests. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, we'll have time for questions after the presentations, so, and when you want to ask a question, you ask it to me and I'll ask him. Thank you.
For the record, Chris Vanderburg, we're Brian and consultants, here tonight representing our client, Blue Cat LLC. So, Brian, I've just kind of gave you a brief overview of the project, opposing 26 duplex style townhomes along the single, four, four single family type home units here. The site will be accessed via Westport Lakes Drive down to the east via Golf U Lane, and then propose 24 foot wide condo roadway here and going traveling south to north.
Could I interrupt just for a second? The gentleman asked where 177 was. If you could give us a locus of, yeah, how you get there?
177, I believe is on this side of Mount St., I'm not too familiar with Westport, but I believe Westport Lakes Drive comes up to 77, was that 177?
Yeah.
I believe 177 over here. We have Grand, Grand Pine Way just to the west up here.
Thank you.
Currently, the site is densely wooded with wetlands to the south and then wellows to north here, and this is all densely vegetated outwoods over in this area. Curling the site slopes pretty much from west to east with a high point being offsite here, with drainage stormwater flow flowing to these two wellows here, so, south and to the north. Now, exposed layout. So, we've got Brian talked about previously, this proposed layout. Access to the site will be off of Westport Lakes Drive over this way, via Golf U Lane, which was previously approved subdivision road as part of Westport Lakes Drive project. And then access will be via 24-foot wide condo road, which will tee here, along with 24-foot wide condo road extending to the south, yes, the south into the north. And as stated previously, it will be 26 duplex styled townhomes per dump here, with four single family type stone homes here. We are providing cul-de-sacs at the southern end and the northern end. These have been designed according to the fire department standards. Each cul-de-sac will be landscaped. We provide sidewalks on one side of the roadway. We got additional amenities including exercise station, benches along the corrective site, providing low-level lighting for this site along the street trees and plantings as well along the most of you. These plantings were done and drawn up by our resident landscape architect for our company, Anthony. The plantings shown are laid out, and of course, still have a nursery, coastal planting guide. This is typical foundation planting for the units, and this is typical planting for the proposed community building on site. Additional amenities included, proposed garden and associated parking for the community center. Overall rating, generally maintaining the same range patterns from previous conditions. Stormwater runoff will be captured via a series of retention basins here at the southern end of the project, at the intersection of the condo roadways here, and at the, and the northern end of the project of the site. Stormwater will be captured via, this roadway for Golf U Lane has been designed in accordance with the previously approved Westport Lakes Drive developments. Stormwater flows to a series of catch basins to an existing stormwater retention basin down over there. We designed this site in accordance with matches to stormwater management standards along with Westport local stormwater bylaw recognition, and with this design, we're able to achieve reduction in post-development rates as well. The high level of that, and the utility plan. Here is the overall utility plan we have. Each duplex building will be serviced by their own septic tank, which will flow gradually via down to a pump chamber down at the southern end of the cul-de-sac, pumped up via a forest main to the common septic system found at intersection of Golf U Lane Road and Westport Lakes Drive here. That's the high level of that. Few of that. Proposed water for the site will be via proposed wells, which you can see here. They will be served by proposed wells per four duplex buildings. So, these four buildings will be serviced by this well, subsequently these four will be serviced by this well. Electric, electric may have, although not shown, will be part of this, part of the well. So, that's kind of a real high level overview of the project. We have received the comments from fire departments, board health, peer view of SED and COAL, planning board staff support, we have reviewed them all, we're providing, we're in the works, providing formal responses. One thing this, these plans do reflect, that we talked about at the conservation meeting, was providing this southern cul-de-sac here for the fire departments for recommendations of providing outside raise of 60 foot, which required us to install a four-foot high retaining wall along here so we could maintain the existing element of work from bridges and so, no additional clearing is required for the retaining wall. So, that's one thing that we have addressed from the previous submission of the planning board. So, yes, we also have some needs to conservation. They were, they were okay with what we provided them. They have responded to and received that mutation of their advice cul-de-sac. They are with our, with our, with our, Colonel, what was the board's impression of this?
Good, John?
Wanted you to go back to that. I love the name Westport Lakes. Of course, known for our lakes. With this slide here, it looks like there are four lakes there.
Yes.
Blue seems to connote lakes. But then you get into the topography. Are those really lakes?
No, no, no. These are just retention, retention ponds. This is more just to kind of create picture to really delineate like where the stormwater features are. Similarly, these are, this is the wetland for this round. We need that all that's right.
So, so there aren't really lakes at Westport Lakes?
No.
They're just blue on a drawing.
Oh, yeah.
Not really lakes. Thank you.
Are you done with that part of the presentation or are you? So.
Jim?
Just a comment, I guess, at our, at your, the last time you appeared, I had made the
observation that I hoped that it would be more, this is, be more trees. And I can see from your plan, I mean, I counted about 22 trees for your 56 units, 52 units, sorry.
But opposed, street trees?
Street trees, yes. I'm sorry. So, and you know, we'd hope that, we're trying to have developments like this be, not reforested because you're taking down a lot of trees to begin with. But what we hope is that you will plant new trees and it makes the drive more attractive and, and give shade to the lawns and it helps the overall environment of the project. So I'd encourage you to reconsider that.
I have to add something, something we can consider looking into.
Thanks.
I had raised an issue when, first of all, I thank you guys for coming in for the pre-application as well. And at that time, I had raised an issue about compact wastewater. Have you looked at that at all? It's not clear to me how you're dealing with that here.
I believe I was part of that initial conversation.
So, right now, we don't know whether it's 26 different septics or whether you're thinking about a compact wastewater system, which would be ideal in this kind of a dense layout.
Yeah, it would be a full denitrification system, a common septic system for all, like all the units will be treated here.
So this is a compact wastewater system?
What's been planned and what's been designed is a state-of-the-art denitrification system. The only portion that can't be compact is the board has requirement that the each duplex have its own holding tank.
Yeah.
Any, any waste will then be pumped and discharged down to the base of Westport Lakes Drive.
Yeah.
Where the sewage treatment system will be.
Cool.
So it is, it is a full denitrification system. And then the, about Westport Lakes, it got the name Westport Lakes because on the opposite side of the street, you know, there's a concern about the drainage, about whether, whether or not the system could handle the drainage. To refresh, refresh my memory, there are two very large drainage systems across the street on Westport Lakes. Those were designed as, as retention ponds actually built into the, into what had been an auto bond designed golf course. So that's where all the drainage goes, is these very large lakes that were going to be created for the golf course and hence the name Westport Lakes. But those, that's where the, the capacity for this development.
But this would be, to get off the lake, but this would be, I think, the first neighborhood denitrifying, neighborhood scale septic system.
I believe it is. I'm not sure. I don't believe Oak Ridge, which is the last one that was done in town, I was part of that development team. I don't believe that was a requirement at that point.
Yeah.
This would be the largest scale that I'm aware of in Westport.
No, there's, there is one at Nokachoke Village.
Oh, Nokachoke.
Correct, yep. I was on the.
That's 50, 50 housing units into one system.
Yes.
On one.
And that's, that's everything. So you don't have to have 26 individual holding tanks. And I don't think you need to do that either. I'm not sure that that's a requirement from DEP. I don't think it is.
I can, I can make a note, I know what it was and has in the past that we needed at least 24 hours worth of holding capacity in case of an emergency situation. The style, when I was on, I was on the Affordable Housing Trust when, when that was designed, when that project was designed. And the difference in that project, first of all, was accessibility to public horse body, which had been attempted to negotiate. Was an attempt to negotiate. Then the second was the style of development that it is, you know, with multi-unit buildings. These are all one level dwellings that are being designed really for, you know, people who are transitioning out of larger homes or looking for a home in Westport. So it's a, it's a different style development. That, I, that septic system is very over, over at Westport, though it really is.
It gets down to five milligrams per liter, which is very high.
Yeah, that was, that was a fantastic sign.
So, but you know, I would, I would like to, to ask my own question in that I think it's one of the most germane for this proposal, is could you explain how this is going to be independent living and congregate living? And there were specific definitions of what congregate means. And from, from your application, it doesn't look like you meet that standard. So I would like to hear from you. How are you going to have any congregate services?
Well, if you, I, I think you were the only, possibly the only member that was on the board at the time that the original bylaw was written.
I wasn't.
Okay. I wrote that in, with Gail, Gail Nigarelli, who was then the town planner. Congregate living was important and not for the independent living, but for the assisted living. The idea, I think, where we're sharing kitchen, for these units to share kitchens or share other common element, living elements, it is part of that design. The congregate areas have been provided in conformance with what was done at Oak Ridge, with the common, with, with areas where people within the community can meet if they decide to, a, the offices for the condominium association, the public garden, and open space that can be really utilized in, in a way that the members or the owners decide. So we feel that we've met the requirements of providing an area to congregate. However, congregate living, in the current definitional term of sharing a bathroom or sharing a similar facilities would really, we think, be geared more appropriately towards an assisted living community, where one large building has perhaps a dining room or a kitchen or a, you know, food service facility. But these units each will have their own kitchens, will have their own private areas and you have to design this.
So I think what this is, is an over 55 community. It is not an independent living facility, nor is it congregate housing. And that's the question. I don't see how this fits into our bylaw to allow this. So I would open it up to the board to ask further questions, but you know, I have been in independent living facilities and this is not an independent living facility.
Well, what all I can say, say through the chair, all I can say is, is that a facility just like this had been permitted under the same regulations and rules that are now present. And it was a success both for the developer and for the town from a financial standpoint.
I think it's a successful over 55 community. And I think the people living there do appreciate that it is available to them. However, I don't see how our bylaws allow them and to, to say because the planning board 19 years ago approved it, they may have erred. I don't think we're obligated to make the same mistake twice.
Well, I'd ask for direction from the board then, given that this is a, we've entered this as a cooperative process with both the assistant town planner and now the town planner. What type of congregate facilities or what do, what is the vision that the board now holds for a facility like this? Because.
We have a letter from the, the head of the council on aging. Michael, do you have that available? Could you read what she said?
It's, it's not a letter. It's just a recap of a conversation that I had with her. Let me pull it up. So Beverly Bisch, the head of the council on aging, stated that the definition of a, of congregate living, which, actually this was quoted from an email. So this was provided in a, in a statement that she had emailed to me, which is provided as a type of housing in which each individual or family has a private bedroom or living quarters, but shares with other residents a common dining room, recreational room, or other facilities. So I think what Jim is getting at is that that shared living space arrangement is really critical to meeting the zoning bylaw standards, particularly 9.1.6 and by extension 9.1.1. Those are the, the pieces that you would want to refer to.
Well, I think interestingly enough, having worked with Elaine Ostrom for many years on the Affordable Housing Trust for the town, congregate, congregate living, and that the definition of congregate living has, has evolved. It's, it has greatly evolved over the past 20 years. New urbanism, which the definition that we're utilizing right now is, is from basically the definitional terms of architectural woman called new urbanism. And the New Urbanist Handbook states that by creating these congregate areas, you're going to be able to build communities. One of the big ideas that Elaine had, which I thought was a wonderful idea, was looking to have common woodworking shops or common facilities that would help individuals. I don't have a tool, maybe it's in the congregate woodworking shop or in the congregate repair facility. All of those things, congregate living has a very, very broad definitional term. And depending on which school of thought it come from is going to determine what congregate living facilities are. We think that we're meeting them with the facility and the community center, which gives an opportunity for individuals to interact. But we don't see a future in, in providing multi-unit dwellings with a shared, with a shared kitchen and living area. Most people that, or the target audience for these dwelling units, I just don't, I just don't see, see that happen. In an assisted living facility, which I visited, I don't know how many of them, to visit family members, those facilities are available and it does provide a vital, a vital link between the community. But we don't see that as this being that type of, of an assisted living facility. But we'll be happy to take the board's comments and look at them and take your suggestions as to how we may adapt this facility and add more congregate features.
So my own thought is my parents were in, in an independent living facility in Connecticut and it had over 300 units and they were all apartments and they all had kitchens or kitchenettes. But they had a dining room, which provided two meals a day.
Sure.
And if you needed the third meal, you could, you could buy that and they'd bring it to your place. They had services there. They had the shared work rooms, the shared billiard room. They had a library. They had social services as a community. And this is individual living units, but they're all separate and there's no reason for them all to get together. And if you needed independent living and you needed something to cook your meals, this is not it.
Well, it's, it's independent living. And, and I think a lot, a lot of the features that you've described, my own, my own grandmother lived in a great, a great place that she owned and paid an additional monthly fee above and beyond her own ownership interests in that unit. And at the end of the day, she was guaranteed, when she passed, I think, a 90% buyback on her original price.
That's exactly right.
So the, so this concept is different though. Because not everyone wants to spend an extra four, four or $5,000 a month on those other, other facilities if they're not going to utilize them. Again, 55 is the threshold. Fifty, I, we, I think 55, 25 years ago, maybe had, there was a different idea about being 55 than there is now. We anticipate this, this to be an active community where people can eventually transition if they need to and adapt their units according, according to their own needs. So it has been designed as, you know, handicapped adaptable. All of the interior dimensions meet at the exterior doors, the elevations from the driveway to the garage, all of those things can be adaptable as lifestyle needs change. However, there, there is no intent to become a facility that provides extra base services that you find in, in a, in a hybrid or an assisted living facility. You know, I, I, I know the minimum requirements for those that I think are wonderful places, but that is, this is not going to be that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the plan that's up here. There's some, there's some black dashed lines on there. What, what are those?
That is a proposed open space requirement. So this plan has had a work as a tool purpose. One is a presentation plan for everyone here. Additionally, it was actually our open space requirement as part of actually, it is required as for the overlay apartments for required open space. That line is subject to change based on potential here recomments, this plan for common. Yeah, so this dash line that you're seeing here?
Yes.
That, that's just the outline of the proposed open space. And you can kind of see it here a little bit, that dash a little bit, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but that's, this is what that essentially is going to be.
Right. And what, what is that? Is that a lot?
No, no, it's not a lot. It's just delineating the required open space area. And that's essentially what this plan is actually meant to demarcate as far as the requirements.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. And I think, I agree, Mr. Chairman. This has to be, I, I don't doubt that you can build and sell these units. That's, that's not for us to decide. What's for us to decide is whether or not this complies with our rules and regulations and whether or not this is an independent living facility under our definition. And right now, I don't think it is. And if you have to make that case, you have to make a showing for us to make a finding that it complies. And what I've seen to date and what I've heard so far this evening, it doesn't have my vote. So that's, that's a threshold comment and that's something. So that's a threshold comment, and that's something that the board needs to see. I prefer it not in continued rhetoric tonight in front of the whole audience, although you can comment, but some kind of showing that it complies. Then, and if we were to find that, then I have some questions about whether or not this is compliant, this is compliant with Title V. And I have more questions about the stormwater management. But this, if we took these for what they are, two-bedroom, single-family homes, attached homes and four single-attached homes, this would be 13,320 gallons per day. You would need a wastewater treatment plant. You would need a groundwater discharge. And I think you're hiding behind the fact that this is a senior housing project as defined by Title V. So on one hand, you argue that, no, no, this is really independent. It's not this congregate care or congregate living. On the other hand, well, it really is one of those things for Title V. Because Title V, to get credit for 150 gallons per two bedrooms, it says, it defines what an elderly housing project is what they call it. And it says a facility containing elderly housing units.
Sure, I agree.
I mean, you have, this has to be viewed in the most liberal of undertakes in one's hands. It's all independent and spread. That's where we're going. And then hide behind Title V. No, it's really a facility.
I disagree.
I know you disagree, but I have the floor.
Oh, sure.
I have the floor.
No, you were done.
And I didn't expect anything I have to say this evening you would agree with. That's, I didn't have that, I didn't come with it as an expectation. But so that's another important test that we're going to have, and particularly if we want to have really a denitrification system to integrate that into a common facility, I think that's important. The result also on the backside of that is that there are clusters of eight units served by a well. And yet you have the 100-foot to 50-foot radius, which is the minimum for single-family homes. And I don't know what these well yields are, but I don't think the 100-foot radius is going to work. And that's another test. I have, we have an audience and we should let them have a chance to speak. But I have a lot of design comments. Not all the units are served by sidewalks. And where there are sidewalks, you put the sidewalks in front of the detention basins and not in front of the houses where people come out and walk. You know, there's a lot of design issues here that are not good design issues. Also, this, all this driveway section has a cross slope on it. And so you want to be mindful that if this is for age-restricted people, you know, having this minimal drainage system in the street, I'm not worried about will the water, you can make the water run off, but things like icing conditions and snow melt, all of that water is sheeting across the streets here. And that is not a good design where you have senior people likely to be walking across these areas. And then I'll give you a list of comments, but there are a bunch of houses on the, in this drawing, the right-hand side of that circle, in which the garage elevations are lower than the street elevation. You don't want to do that. You don't want to make the garages the low spot in the development. I've got the drainage report here, and you can see I've got some red tabs. I only got this this morning, so I haven't had a chance to dig through it. But there needs to be some work done there.
Yeah. My comment would be, you know, you mentioned you were involved in the other unit. I believe that was Oak Ridge, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, we have a lot of people in the neighborhood here. We've had a lot of these issues with Oak Ridge. They've been before this board numerous times. These concerns that my colleague's mentioning, you know, a lot of it had to do with construction. They didn't put the sidewalks in. Now, what's happened, that's, Oak Ridge was, what, 18 years ago? 17 years ago? I mean, these people now was over 55. Now these people are in their 80s. And they're coming to us and they, you know, they wanted the sidewalk, you know, and then they want, you know, the developer came in.
This is not the same development company.
No, I understand that. That's what I'm trying to get point with my colleague on your design, to make sure your design's correct. I mean, I think this could be a wonderful project, you know? You're getting, you know, it might not fall under what you're trying to put it under, but you could come up with something else to bring it. The community septic, I mean, the town seems to be in favor of that for a village-type atmosphere for the denite. Some of the problems I do see is, I want to take, I want to take the board health's word on what it is, follow the DEP regulations. I would be looking in construction of this project that the towns, this should be all-controlled construction, because that's kind of where it slipped through the cracks in that other development. And we had a board of health inspecting septics. You know, they got problems with their pumps running all the time in the septic. Nobody inspected the sewer mains that were tying in this community septic. So we would definitely want the town's consultant to be present during construction of this. It's a pretty technical system that you're putting in here. And our board of health, as much as they feel that they have the power and jurisdiction over this, the consultant needs to review the installation. Same with the design. They're not qualified for the design. He's telling you, you need individual tanks. I think you need to look at the DEP regulations on what you need to put in there, not with our board of health. Even though it's under their jurisdiction, we need to go that route. Because you probably can save and not have to put those tanks, you know? But it's going to entail larger tunnel tanks and so forth, and things like that. But that's my concern, that it gets, whatever we come up with, and I'm sure we're going to develop something here and it's going to be built, just come up with something that works and is built correctly.
One other quick comment, just related again to another issue that came up with the pre-application meeting, hearing that if you do come back with a new design, that you pay more attention to guest parking, because you've got a 24-foot wide roadway, which is wide enough for, obviously, for cars, two cars each direction, one car each direction. But when you still, if you park alongside that roadway and then try to have other cars get by, it's going to be, it's going to cause congestion and it's not safe. So I just encourage you to look at how you can accommodate guest parking, because most of these residents will obviously have friends and family coming to visit them, and their driveways are too short in many cases to park their cars there, the guest cars there. There are a few that could do that, but most of them can't. So it's a small thing, but it is, it does make, it's a convenience, and it does make, it is a public safety issue as well.
To add to my colleague on that, that was one of the complaints from Oak Ridge. And as we went into COVID and everybody started getting their stuff delivered, and Amazon's running up the road, and people trying to park, and they, you know, now they got people coming to visit them, or you got a nurse coming. I mean, the sidewalk, again, I haven't looked at it too closely. Like my colleague said, it's on this side of the road. I mean, not one of their things, you know, if you're going from one house to another or if you're parking on the street, you want to. So that's something that you really should consider too.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the general public. If anybody would like to speak or ask a question through me, please make your way to the podium. It's okay. So you need to identify yourself and your address. I hear you. Thank you for that. But you have to tell us your name and address.
Okay, my name's Gary Fonzka.
Gary what? Fonzka?
Fonzka.
Did you spell it?
T L Z Y K J.
Okay.
Your address?
What? I'm still confused. I don't know that.
Your address, sir? Sir, your address? Where do you live?
I own property on Rossell Row.
Okay.
I'm still confused on how the entrance road is from 177. I mean, this is not 177, but that looks like it comes in from that row.
I think that is Lake...
Yeah, we can put up the assesses.
The control is here?
The entrance road would be right here.
Yep.
And where the houses are going to be built? Up this way?
Right where the big circle is.
Yes, where the big circle is.
Because that's mostly all wetlands in there, and you're going to put a road across wetlands?
Apparently, there's a space in between these two wetlands that show on the map. It has to be confirmed, but...
Well, the drainage down there, I've walked down there and it's black. And my second question is, not up about drainage. There's so many houses in there, I mean, all the houses in Westport have leachant fields. You can't put leachant fields in there.
No. They're going to have one down near the entrance road, along there.
This is the road coming in from 177?
Yep.
And this is what is here now?
That's what it is now.
Okay. Because down here, that's all wetlands, all in there, all up in here. And they're going to build lakes out of the wetlands?
Apparently, there's some drainage facilities on the bottom part of that road to the east. So that were built when they built that road.
Right through here is dry?
Yep. That's what they say.
Oh, okay. And my last question is, does this low-cost housing?
15% would be affordable.
Because I know there's a lot of people that was born, and their homes are worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I can't see where this guy is 30 feet away from his neighbor, his house is going to be worth $200,000.
It's the law, so I don't think it's going to be a problem. The outside of these units will look all identical, so. Thank you.
You know, one of the things too about that other place that they were talking about, Oak Ridge, I mean, if you drive through the place, it's nice. It's beautiful, but they do have some issues. And one of the things he mentioned about the drainage, I don't know whether this has full basements or not, but one of the problems that they had with Oak Ridge is being with the community septic, they didn't do any water table tests in the units. So they had a lot of problems with basements flooding and had to put drainage systems in after. So, I mean, you probably want to get an idea what the water table is up, where you're putting, set the elevations on your foundations and your design and all of that stuff too, so.
I'd be positive additional approval. We do have, we have done test tests at each location of closed basins. And just as we can do with spore control, I believe it's possibly 48 inches down is where the water table is that we determined and has averaged throughout the whole site. And that was consistent through all of the proposed adaptation basins that are there.
So because that became one of the problems with why they couldn't put the sidewalk in, because now they, you know, you still have to make sure your sidewalk's ADA compliant and so forth. So when you're designing the elevations of the houses and the garages and all that to be ADA compliant in the future, you got to take that into consideration.
Anybody else in the audience?
My name's Bob Sykes.
Could you speak a little louder or closer to the mic? You can pull the mic up so you don't have to bend over.
Thank you. My name's Bob Sykes. I'm here on behalf of my father-in-law, who owns 668 American Legion Highway. Can you explain to the public the importance of the classification of the independent living facility? Is that to permit the density that they're proposing?
Yes, it is. Otherwise, it would be like every other place, 60,000 square foot lots.
Can you also confirm the status of, with the conservation commission?
I don't know. I'll ask the applicant. Have you been to Concom?
Yes, because they have given us their blessing. I haven't signed off on it, but they have given us our blessing. Thank you for the rule.
And so they've delineated all the wetlands and they've agreed with your wetland lines?
I believe they hired a different consultant too, right? Didn't they hire a home consultant?
So a third-party review was completed?
Yes.
Is that publicly available?
We should be, yes.
Yeah, we just want to confirm that there's no negative impacts. I know it was mentioned that the drainage patterns are going to be maintained, but you know, you're showing us a male on the western property limits and you're channelizing to make flow to adjacent properties, specifically my father-in-law's southern property. So we just requested that be reviewed additionally. Potentially, if you can incorporate, you know, smaller, low-impact, non-BMPs upstream, you know, those negative impacts.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? So, yeah.
My name's Dan Stelgen. I own 52 A Spinnick Way. This is the first time I'm hearing. I live like up the street, so I'm not too familiar with this project, but seeing the amount of houses here, it's just kind of making my meals go. I go in and out of assisted living facilities all day long. That's what I do for a living. And, but it's kind of concerning me, all the traffic that will bring by everyone moving in. And my thing is safety. Do we have enough fire department members, police department members to accommodate the whole town when there's something going on? Because there was an incident spinning away where we had to have the Dartmouth Police come in and kind of secure the bad guy until Westport was clear to come and arrest the guy. Like, are we well-equipped for all of this, to accommodate all this volume into the town? That's my question about this project.
That's always an issue, and it's always an issue at town meeting on how much we can have to spend on these things. I think currently, we have enough coverage. And every year, I think the police and fire ask for more people, and sometimes they get them and sometimes they don't, depending on the budget. But I think, on the whole, I think we can handle this. There's not that many people. So, but I thank you for your questions. This is not an assisted living, this is not an assisted living facility. So this is an independent, it's one step down from assisted living. And it could be a step. Some places have independent living, assisted living, and nursing home care in the same place, as I'm sure you're... Some places have a s- independent living, assisted living and nursing home care in the same place, as I'm sure you're aware, so... Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Ligia Frias, L-I-G-I-A-Frias, F-R-I-A-S. Course training is a concern, and I second that, and it'd be appreciative, so I could obviously go into it thoroughly. I moved into the neighborhood about two years ago, and, um, a concern is with all this traffic, Westport Lakes has no sidewalks right now. What do we intend to do about the safety of that road?
There's quite a few houses on that road, and, um, I think that is a, a question. This is adding quite a few to a dead-end street, so, uh, that would be part of our, our thought process and want to know how, how we're gonna handle this, and is the, is Westport Lakes Road capable of handling the extra traffic?
Right now, the way that it is overgrown, to be honest with you, one car can, one car can make it through the road. So, you watch out for each other, 'cause I would say it's not a lot of traffic going on right now, but we're basically traveling in the middle of the road. Where my son, about two years ago, had an accident there because of when he was turning in and somebody was coming out, he didn't have the clearance. So, that incident alone was an issue, never mind with all this traffic and children in the neighborhood.
So you live on Westport Lakes?
Six Westport Lakes, which is at the first house.
First house off of, off of 177?
Correct.
And that's a town road?
Well, right now, it is a private road.
It's a private road.
Correct, right now, it's a private road because it's not fully developed. We have four homes right now that are being occupied. Um, the land itself is not moving, I know that there's been a lot of interest for those lots to be sold, but they've been turned, turned away, so the, you know, when will we become private? I'm sorry, when will we become a, a public road, because that development is not really moving?
Uh, it, there's a process to become a public road?
From what I understand, oh, it is, I'm sorry.
There is a process, um, and homeowners can initiate the process, but, uh, it's usually the developer who asks. And I don't know if the developer is still around or not, is...
He is around, um, I'm not sure, um, if he's responsive enough, to be honest with you. Um, my, again, my thing is, I was under the impression that you had to, the development had to be seventy-five percent complete before it can, you can start the process of it becoming public. Am I correct, or?
It, it has, it has to be complete.
It has to be a hundred percent.
A hundred percent, so in this case, we are far from there.
I, I don't think the lots have to be completely developed, but the road has to be...
The road has to be...
The road is not complete yet. Like, it's not done, we just have even the, the first...
Just find them.
Yeah, so even that's not done, there's zero sidewalks, we have children that play there, uh, families that walk, you know, and it's totally unsafe, completely unsafe, and that's definitely a concern of mine, I have children, I have neighbors here that have small children, people that are coming and moving in that have children, and we move there because we like the quiet of Westport and what Westport offers. Um, I think that this project, although I see a lot of positives, the traffic that's gonna generate in a small street is not a positive. It's very negative, I wish that there would be a different alternative for this project as far as entrance and exit. Because then it's also going to be staffing, nursing, visiting nurses, family, um, it's gonna be a lot of traffic that I do not support.
One clarifying point, that West, I think, uh, Westport Lake Road is forty-foot wide.
Well, you should see how overgrown it is, and there's no sidewalks. So even though it is, it doesn't look like it is now, it needs to be taken care of then.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, Brian, you mean it's a forty-foot way out?
No, it's built, it's built...
It's paved forty feet?
It was, it was built because it was gonna be an entrance for a golf course. Originally, they were gonna be, um, residential units, um, that would cluster to the north of the current doorway we were proposing. And those units were gonna be quadplexes, um, and part of the golf course community. And when the town said no to the housing, the golf course disappeared. Uh, but the road itself is confirmed compliant, the road is built to a forty-four width.
So will there be sidewalks put in, or how?
Yeah, and it was in one of the conditions of the roadway, he said it always remain private. So, after the, the fellow who owns the little lots now finishes, I believe there's a bond in place for a final coat. So the bond is in place for a final coat to be in, but it won't go in until most of the construction's done. Uh, that's my understanding, uh, but I believe there's a covenant, uh, through the chair stating that it has to remain a private way.
Well, look that up, I'm not aware of that.
I believe, I believe that was part of the grant originally, but that was, that roadway was declared an ancient way all the way up to the end, actually, it keeps extending from the cul-de-sac at the end, and it was brought up to the then zoning requirements, the plan board requirements.
Well, I can tell you that, with the, with the homes that are going up and that are being built currently, the construction crew that's been passing by, and I happen to walk to get my mail at the bottom of the street, if there is a car going down and a construction vehicle going up, one has to wait in order for the owner to pass.
Okay, well, we've got some things to, to learn, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brent Ferrera, P E R E I R A, twenty-six Westport Lakes Drive. Just have a couple of things that I'd like you to consider as far as approving this project along the line, as my neighbor stressed on the same, uh, things that I am worried about as well. Westport Lakes Drive was put in, in somewhere between two thousand five and two thousand eight. It was situated, was, or permitted for twenty-seven house lots. Currently, there are four developed since two thousand and five. The road is severely grown in, the catch basins and all of the drainage, um, facilities there are still sticking out of the roadway. The road is plowed every so often. Maintenance of the road has not occurred since I've lived there in the last seven years or so. They advertise this, this, um, plan as a low, a low impact. Special permit for an independent level living facility that's low impact. It's in parentheses in, in the application. I don't understand, what, what part of fifty-two units, well, twenty-seven units or twenty-six units times two, 'cause they do places, what part of that is low impact?
Uh, it is not, but what low-impact development stands for is the part of our zoning bylaw that requires, uh, certain type of wa- of stormwater mitigation on a lo- on a low-impact basis.
So it has nothing to do with what this is gonna bring in as far as traffic?
No, no, absolutely not.
Just a couple of other things I'd like you to think about, uh, as it's being processed. You mentioned that this septic plan for this is similar to that of Nokachoke.
No, it's not.
Somebody here did.
I know, but it's not.
Okay.
It, it, it is in one respect, that they're, they're gonna be treating all the wastewater down where that little driveway comes out, where the green is, or just west of that, I'm not sure exactly, can't tell from here, somewhere in there, uh, but each duplex unit would have its own septic tank. And, uh, that is not what's in Nokachoke, Nokachoke has one...
I guess what I'm asking you is, the final, the final locate, the final... What, like, I understand that these, these may have, they're in their kind of tanks, but they all get pumped to one system?
Yep.
I'm asking, is that one system the same as Nokachoke?
I don't know.
No.
Probably not, but I don't really know for a fact what kind of system it is.
Yeah, I'm just curious why someone might have mentioned that, if it was similar to that, that was...
Well, Mr. Bullard said it's great to see a developer doing this, we've already done it once with Nokachoke, Nokachoke Village, it's off of 177.
I know where that is, but you're not, you're saying it's a similar system, but you're not, you're saying it's, it's different?
It, it's similar in that it's treating all at once, that's...
I'd like to consider that, what, is that like Nokachoke? If you have any ability to figure out their failure rate currently, since it's installed, because if I happen to know that, it fails often, and, and septic backs up into the, the residence, uh...
I know, I know they've had trouble with the pumps, and I think they were installed improperly, but I thought it was corrected already.
I feel like this is of a similar stature, if not bigger than Nokachoke.
It is bigger.
As far as the capacity.
It is bigger.
I'm curious how, uh, not knowing down bylaws and such, if, um, if Westport Lakes Drive is to remain a private way for eternity, how can some type of facility like this have access from private way?
I think they, I don't know exactly, but I assume that they have the, the right to use that for access of their land in the back, because I think it was all one ownership at some time.
So they, meaning the landlord, but...
Yeah, landlord.
At the point, this changes when fifty-six families start living there.
Yep.
Now it's not just one landlord who needs access to their property.
Right.
It's fifty-six individual families.
You're right.
It's pretty insane, to be honest.
It, it's a question, so, it's a question that I can't answer today, but we're gonna look into it.
I, I'd like to reiterate that, Westport Lakes Drive was installed somewhere between two thousand five and two thousand eight, and has yet to be fully developed.
Yep.
Second to that, it was gonna be a golf course to start, that got, that got shut down, and then there was a plan for twenty-seven lot, cul-de-sac subdivision. Twenty-seven lots, four developed since two thousand eight. This portion here was in the original plans when, when, I don't know who was, but now it's Blue Cat LLC, four of those, uh, three other, um, that developed together. This was in plan back in two thousand eight, when the original, um, permits were requested. This is considered phase two of the, of the, the construction, so to say. How do we move on to phase two if phase one has not been created?
I think it is a, a correct question to ask, how do they have the right to use a private road for this facility? Uh, I'm sure that they will, um, come back with an answer, but I don't know what that answer is. And I think the question of traffic is a legitimate question.
With four houses on the, on the road currently, there's already been, since I've been there, there's been two crashes with four families living there, with the intersection between Westport Lakes Drive and 177. That should, should definitely be a consideration, uh, as far as, um, how many cars you could potentially have when getting out of Westport Lakes Drive for this project, any interaction with 177?
Well, without a traffic study, I don't know how many cars, but it could be two cars per unit, it could be a hundred cars, they could be going in and out three or four times a day, that's four hundred, four hundred, uh, vehicle trips.
Solves problematic.
And it sounds like there'd be more, too, because then you have FedEx, and you have Amazon, and you've got UPS, and the, the post office, and whoever else is delivering stuff, so there's a lot of potential here, so, thank you very much.
I know, over my five minutes, I just, um, I mean, I live there, so, and all these cars are gonna pass directly in front of my driveway, I have three young children, the road is, at this moment, unacceptable as far as on, so... I understand that the current developers maybe have the right to not finish it. Um, I just don't know where that lies, the, the road has been...
It doesn't have...
When they started to redevelop the, the twenty-seven lots, they were constructed, or they were required to setback the road, an estimator came in, they cut out ten feet, they made it nice and dirt, but now it's all grown back in.
So...
It covers, it covers half of the lane. Well, I'm gonna go and measure the road, I don't, I don't believe that it's forty feet.
I think it's a forty-foot right-of-way, I think it's probably twenty or twenty-two feet wide. Uh, Nadine, do you know if we have shared any on this?
So, one, one of the things, I think what they, they're getting access in the original, same thing with the original project, 'cause it was an ancient way. And what that, what that means in, in staying a private road, it, it just means that they, they require them to build it to a certain standard, but it's gonna be, remain private, means the town will never take it over to give you plowing services or anything like that. And this was kind of before, now we presently, we create like an association for private way. So, basically, when we say it's a private way, you're one of the owners on that property, on that road, it's your road with everybody else. So when they're, when they're finished, it's gonna be like your obligation to make sure that they finish correctly, 'cause you're, being an owner, you're responsible for the upkeep. So moving forward into the back of this, they, they, they're gonna have to come, you know, it's gonna be, these are gonna be condominiums and an association, they're gonna have to create the association. So the association will probably, I would assume, have to take on that portion of the road that goes by your house. Otherwise, it's private, everybody owns it, you're gonna, you know, I, I'm not sure how that's gonna work.
So you characterize this as condominiums?
It'd be condominium ownership.
Just, I, I could stand up here and try to figure out more stuff, but I'm sure there'll be more meetings. Uh, I'd just like to close by a comment that was made as far as, um, congregate housing. Alex has this big broad definition, I'd like you to consider the exact definition of congregate housing. Congregate housing is a shared living arrangement that combines housing and services from older adults and younger facilities. A type of housing in which each individual family has a private bedroom or living quarters, shared with other residents, a common dining room, recreation room, or other facilities, as the board had actioned. I would just like to make sure you take that also.
Thank you, we're aware of that, we're, we've been researching that as well, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, we do have shared any on Westport Lakes?
Uh, so, if there's nobody else, I'd like to get the planner's recommendation.
So I think, based on, on the discussion here, and with the... The inability to determine that there's, really to find that there are any congregate living facilities, um, in this development, I can't provide a recommendation of approval for this development, that's, that's a really critical piece to this development. Um, there has to be some sort of congregate living facilities that would involve sharing space such as church ends, with common rooms, things of that nature, and so, you know, the, the board could continue to a later date if, you know, the applicant is amendable to modify the plans to incorporate that congregate living. Um, but otherwise, I think the board would be obligated to deny this proposal because it does not meet standards.
Okay, so, uh, if we were going to go forward, I think we... Okay, so, if we were going to go forward, I think we would have to have a, make a finding that it complies with the stipulation in the bylaw for independent living, assisted living, or including congregate living. And so, if anybody would like to make a motion, I would entertain it on the finding.
Are you, I have a question.
Sir?
Are you looking for a motion to continue, to allow that? Or a motion to deny because we haven't heard it?
We're looking for a motion to continue. I believe that all of the board members that are concerned with court issues would like a, like a chance to address the issue. Would you? So we'd be looking for continuation. If absent civil continuance, we'd withdraw the whole application if the town's not interested in moving forward with this. But we're not expecting a vote this evening on the project. We understood that there was still some suspicion that were requested by SW poll that we were working on. And I don't believe they'd even have been reviewed by your department yet, so it doesn't. This'd be the quickest hearing that I've ever been to in the past twenty-seven years. But if the board does not wish to grant this continuance to look at this further, we'd be withdrawing the application at this time.
So, if we were to continue it, Mr. Corey, how long would you need?
I think we talked to the engineer, there's some modifications that have been requested for the plan. We have to have a team meeting, you know, with the principals. And also, and also, I, I think, you know, having been through the history of the bylaw, the definitional terms of congregate living, I, and I will express this very strongly, the, the bylaw was written, the idea of having, of our needing shared kitchens, shared facilities such as that, were met, the idea is to build a community. And I think we provide a, they'll live where they can choose can exercise congregate living, or con, or can congregate, as the word is. So, the common term is congregate, a place where people can meet, huddle, or get together and express a sense of community. So, I'd ask the board for continuance so we can address some of the issues, work with the town planner.
Well, if we're going to continue, I think if you're going to include what we're talking about here, independent living and congregate housing, or living, you're gonna need, basically, to redo the whole thing. And that is gonna take more than to the next meeting. So, I would entertain a motion to continue or to find that this does not comply. But if we continue, it's gonna be sufficiently in the future so that you have time to change this application so it complies.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be looking for a, a want continuance, please.
So, it's up to the board, I'd entertain a motion to continue or to.
What are the meeting dates, Nadine, for February?
March nineteenth.
March nineteenth.
Yeah, March nineteenth.
I move that we continue the public hearing for Westport Lakes ILF to March nineteenth.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a continuance of their, of the time that they have for the application? Because this is quite a time. When, when do they submit the application? So I think we have a hundred and twenty days? On some things, and ninety days on others, I'm not sure what we have. Some of the materials are date stamped October.
You see it is October fifth, uh, twenty-third.
Yeah.
Five months?
Are you close to six months?
Five, that's five months, five months plus. That's more than a hundred and twenty days. So I think, I think we need to have a, an official agreement that you're, we're continuing this hearing to that date.
The applicant's here, he'll be happy to sign on behalf of the company.
Okay.
You'd like to sign it now?
No.
We don't have anything to sign, but tomorrow morning?
Sure.
Could you please come in and sign it?
Sure.
Otherwise, I don't know what we do, so.
Do you have a location though, sold online, Ryan?
Okay.
It's for all the applications, so. Okay, so it's continued until March nineteenth. At what time?
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as soon as it gets quiet back, we'll start with the next public hearing.
To say you may.
March nineteenth, nineteenth, so nineteenth.
Oh, you are. Good to see you.
Jim, prior, prior to that, though, they're gonna be coming in, meeting with Mike Wright.
Nadine?
Because if they don't make substantial progress.
Ask Robin if she can.
And that's gonna be tough.
And turn on her mic? If you ask Robin, are they gonna turn on her mic? Yeah, we can hear you.
That should be quick.
That's okay, the mic is the important part, so, we're okay.
Okay, could we have some quiet? Next up is the six-thirty public hearing for four thirty-five Old Harbor Road, file number twenty-three dash oh-three-seven SPA, request by the applicant for site plan review in a project involving converting the existing residence into an adolescent education facility. So, I'm gonna reiterate this, with, with this meeting, those commenting will be provided a five-minute period to give their importative questions. All comments should be addressed to me as the chair of the planning board. To ensure that the hearing is completed in a timely fashion, we encourage those speaking to not repeat concerns that have already been submitted for consideration. So, this is a site plan approval, public hearing. This is not a land use public hearing, this is not a zoning board. We're not here to, the planning board cannot decide whether this use is appropriate or allowed by our zoning bylaw. That is the, the job of the zoning enforcement officer, who happens to be the building inspector. And if it is appealed, it goes to the zoning board of appeals, not to the planning board. So, I would start with listening to what the applicant has prepared for the site plan review. And for instance, site plan review really is a part of our bylaws and regulations which deal with parking, with stormwater, and those kinds of issues, so.
The plan sheet, would you like to share it?
No, no, we can go through each one if you want, just to explain to anyone.
Sure.
See, this is the title of the.
So, who are you, Vince?
I'm sorry.
Who are you representing, and where, what's your address?
We have John Connell, Northeast Engineers, East Valley Road, Middleton. Here on behalf of Ken Webber, he's the applicant for the project. Okay, this is the cover sheet, we show the, it's okay, that just shows you an overview of what we're proposing on the, on the parcel. Existing conditions, sheet shows everything that exists on the property now. The existing home, there's a, what they call a river building, a barn, a barn, and then there's a shed there. You can see the topography, existing trees, existing driveway. And here's Old, Old Harbor Road. This is the existing neighborhood that crosses onto Old Harbor. This is what drains the site, and you'll see that on the next sheet, on, on the site rating sheet. This is our proposal here. The parcels, roughly ten acres, ten point two acres. There's a ridge that, that runs through the site, so this water heads towards, will come from this, heads towards the road here, basically, this is the cut-off point. So all of that water heading towards Old Harbor Road. Based upon our, our meetings, we had the pre-application hearing, yeah, last time, and we tried to incorporate everything that the, the board had suggested, and we incorporated at that time. One of the big things was, you know, the, the widening, straighten that driveway out, that sixteen-feet coming in gravel. We added parking spaces, we're up to thirteen total spaces. This will be paved, or proposed to be paved, with accessible parking for the mass AAB. We added a dumpster pad, and a, we'll be screening that as well for any refuse. We indicated a, marked out an area where they could have a vegetable garden, they will be growing some vegetables. Lighting, we proposed wall packs on the existing home, and then some downward lighting just along that path, or the deep paths. And, and I would say the biggest, one of the biggest, if not the biggest concern last time was, was the damage that was, the, the concern was that water would overtop. The road has historically gone over Old Harbor Road. But as designed, we included retention basin to capture all that water, attenuate it, i.e. hold on to that water and meter it out very slowly. And a new culvert under Old Harbor Road to the existing headwall. So we take a lot of pressure, almost all the pressure off the existing culvert that's there now. And then all of that water is recaptured on both sides here, recaptured here, run into, these are small sump areas under the retention basin, and the outlet to the basin ends up in a structure and then crosses the road, decrease all the peaks off the site and keep the runoff off the road, off the road, from ever overtopping the road. I think that was, well, screening as well, what we located, we also located all the, the trees on the property. And we do lose a few trees in here by widening the drive. However, most of them, I think we might have lost a couple, two or three in there. But most of them will remain, and that's the plan, to keep all of those trees for screening. I, I believe that was our septic system too, I did check. I can go through those with, hopefully, given some time with the town comments. But that, that was basically our, our attempt to incorporate everything the planning board had brought and suggested at our pre-application. So I would be happy to answer any questions, or go through the departmental questions as well, whatever.
Yeah, why don't we go through the departmental questions?
The first, these are no particular order, but the way they were attached to the E-W, E-B. Building Department said there's not been a, a building permit application received for this address and question. At this time, the project in question is asking if it be Board of Appeals. That was a building department question, comment. Fire Department was no comment, they had no comment or recommendation. Disability Commission recommended approval with modifications, those modifications being, to be sure that the housing portion has all the AVA required accessibility features like ramps, grab bars, danties, and combat tops accessible to wear chill uses, et cetera. And that, that will be taken, certainly be, certainly be done. That's all part of the internal building construction. Conservation Commission, approval with modifications. There exists wetlands on the opposite side of the street, a hundred-foot buffer zone should be shown extending from the Alphawake and/or DVW, or bordering vegetated wetland hedge. The lot itself does not have any resource areas within the mass portion of the site. So we'll certainly show that, that wetland line at the buffer on the revised plan. Water Seletment, approval with modifications. Water Seletment heard public comments and concerns related to public safety and neighborhood impacts. Water Seletment requests that the planning board consider emergency vehicle response and traffic flow for the site. The board also requests that specifics as to the proposed use be received with the term that the use is an extensive educational use. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend disapproval. And the reason was it is not obvious that this conforms to current zoning bylaws as presented. So those are the departmental comments.
So the Board of Health, they just said they need more information, so.
Correct.
From your perspective, how, how big a system do you need?
My understanding is that it is six bedrooms, and that there's enough capacity. But in speaking with the agent, he also mentioned preparation, like food, et cetera, things like that. So, he wanted to see, you know, a definitive count of people that would be there as far as bedrooms, that we have the six bedrooms and then.
So I, I would surmise that the DEP has some kind of metric for a facility of this sort. You know, not counting the bedrooms per se, but the, the use that it's going to get, and will have some kind of requirement for that.
Was that, excuse me, I asked, was that, what health, was that?
They said other, need more information for this project, the information needed could impact the existing SAS and well. Recommend that the applicant come speak with Health Department.
Yeah, I, I did speak with the agent, and he mentioned that about the septic and the well. So I'm gonna check with the state on the well, and I'll, I'll also check with them on the.
Yeah, so you, you might require a public well for this kind of thing, I don't know, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, you know.
May I ask, John, there are a lot of little issues here, and I appreciate that you came before us earlier and that you've made some modifications. But there's, seems to me that there's a big issue here that exists in a couple of the department comments. You could find it in the Building Department, or you could find it in the Zoning Board of Appeals, which says it's not obvious this conforms to current zoning bylaws. And so before dealing with conservation or other ones, the Building Department or the Zoning Board seem to be of the deal killer, kind of. And so I, it may be that all the people here are waiting for the Assistant Planner's Report, and if you are, we've already done that, so you may want to go home. But I think that I'm interested in what you or your client want to do to resolve the issues of use that the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Building Department are concerned about, because if those can't get resolved, then the little things don't really matter. And they're not really stuff that we deal with. They're stuff that the Zoning Board and the Building Department deal with. And, you know, rather than take up our time and all these people's time, what's your approach on resolving the issue that the Zoning Board has raised, and that the Building Department would raise whenever you went to apply for a permit? How are you gonna approach that, John?
I would say, you know, my concern has been the engineering plan.
Yeah, I know that.
I know that they had gone to the, as far as I know, they were at the ZDA, and they, early on, I recall that, I guess I've always operated under the impression that it was a byright use, educational use, and I thought there was a letter to that effect, home building. So that's, something's changed there?
But here we have the Zoning Board saying it's not obvious that this conforms to the zoning bylaws, and so.
I guess I can check with where they feel we don't, because that's vague. Is it strictly use, or is it some other bylaw that they see on the site? I guess I'll ask them that, because it's, if it, there are other, besides use, I mean, the bylaw does cover a lot of other things. So maybe they have something else that they see. But if it's just a matter of use, I honestly thought that was, that was resolved.
From what I understand, the building inspector gave a letter to the applicant saying that this would be under the education use, and therefore allowed by right, subject to site plan approval here. I think that because of all the discussion and people contacting everybody and saying this is not, shouldn't be allowed use, I think that the Zoning Board really has no jurisdiction until and unless there's an application and somebody with standing appeals the decision that he made, or he changes the decision in the interim. I'm not sure, he will change it, I'm not sure that he's thinking of changing it, but he could change it. And if he doesn't, then the next step is somebody who has standing goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which they've already tried to do. And they had the meeting, which you all attended, and I think they said they were, couldn't make any decision because of the applicant who asked for the appeal, didn't have standing, and number two, there was nothing for them to appeal because the zoning enforcement officer or the building inspector had no application for any building. Beyond that, you know as much as I do, I don't know. But we're not here, what John brings up is a good question. Should we really be concentrating on the weeds here if this is another outstanding thing? Plus, we have the issue that we have gotten your proposal to the, our engineering company who double checks yourself, and they haven't given us a report yet. And so we're gonna need to continue this to another date anyway. So, but that being said, I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments?
Chair, we'll take my colleagues' comments and go to John. I kind of think that's kind of what the chair's just said, we have no choice. I mean, the building inspector's the one that's gonna determine this, and we can't get to that point until this is completed, in the procedure that we're going forth. So I think in all fairness, fairness to the applicant, the weeds that are minor, we need to cut the weeds that are minor and get it squared away and get it to the next step.
We have to, we have to. But what I am saying is that we need to have an extension of this meeting to a time certain, maybe the next meeting, so that our engineering consultant can go over your plan and make comments to us. We can't make a decision without that. So we need to do that, but I would like to, everybody is here, let anybody have any questions. I'm not sure any of them are gonna be about what you just heard for the application. But if you would like to speak, you are welcome to, please keep your comments to five minutes.
Can I go over the site plan review before we do that? So again, I just want to really underscore that the board tonight is, you're tasked with determining that this proposal meets site plan standards for the proposed educational use. We're not reviewing that use itself. It's the building inspector who has the authority to assess the validity of that proposed use. And that is done once a permit is submitted with the Building Department. Having said that, I, after reviewing this proposal under the Planning Board's rules and regulations and the zoning bylaws, and you've already said that, I'm also recommending that this is continued. We just got our consulting engineers' project feedback as of like 4:30, 5 o'clock today. So I haven't even had time to review it, and you all also didn't know that we had received it until this hearing. And so we need time to review that. Now, that notwithstanding, there are a couple of things that I want to address with the site plan. And there, so in our zoning bylaws are, and I won't give the exact citation, but the parking lot will need to have some additional screening. There will have to be, I would recommend that there's vegetation in between the section of the lot not screened by the library building and in between the house, so that way that the parking lot is screened. We also want to encourage that native plant species are used. For our zoning bylaws, you also, you're also going to need additional landscaping in or near the parking area, and we are also going to need to know the proposed refuse areas' fencing materials. And then per our site plan rules and regulations document, we require a couple of additional details on your site plan. As was mentioned, we need the boarding vegetated wetlands delineated on your site plan to that 100-foot buffer zone. We also need the overhead electric on the existing conditions at the Old Harbor Road. And for all of the, we need to know all of the locations of the existing light fixtures in addition to what has been proposed. Additionally, per ours, our site plan rules and regulations, we would require that the pedestrian walkway along the parking lot, that it's included for the entire length of the parking lot's westerly edge, so we're providing a full pedestrian walkway along the entire parking lot. The site plans also need to, so on the plans themselves, we need to know how you're going to designate the parking spaces, so that would be with, you know, curving, painted lines, or similar means, and we need that means indicated on your proposed plan sheets. We will also require two shade trees provided within five feet of that parking lot, in addition to, in addition to 672 square feet of landscape area near that parking lot. And the tree species, we will need to know what they are, and they will have to be, there's some specific requirements for the size of the tree and the height that they grow to, depending on which species you select, and so that it's divided into two categories, deciduous trees and evergreen trees. You can see that in our site plan rules and regulations, what those exact specifications are. And, yeah, so again, for these reasons, with some of these outstanding issues, and the fact that we just received that report from field engineering this evening, I would recommend that this hearing is continued. I think continuing it to the next meeting date is reasonable enough time to review that report.
Okay, so before we do that, it is a public hearing, so we need to open it up to the public and ask if anybody wants to speak or ask questions. And all speak at once.
I'd just like to speak briefly. My name's Kevin Benetoli, I'm at 686 River Road. And the issue that I would raise in light of the fact that the attorney that everybody's sort of hired to represent the director of orders in this matter is sick with COVID and not here, and I think you guys probably got that message asking for continuance. But the one issue that I sort of fleshed out in discussion with them was Section 5.1 of the rules and regulations. And my question to you as the chair is, how do you get around the language, or how do you explain that language that says that you're required to evaluate the uses when your position is that you don't need to evaluate the uses? And I'm not throwing a tough question at you, although I am, but doesn't the second sentence, if you review it, say that essentially if a finding is required on that, that it must be found first before moving forward? I just wanted to get your position on that.
I think you interpret that wrong, and it is my opinion that what that requires us to do is to ascertain whether the site plan approval details are more injurious to the environment or to the neighborhood, and not the use. We have no authority to second guess the question of use for our bylaw. And if you like, we can ask our attorney if she's still listening. Robin, are you there?
Would you like to address that?
Yes, please.
So ultimately, I would protect your rule and regulations. I think as you all, at least the board is aware, the rule and regulations have to be within the scope of the zoning bylaw, and they can't change what the zoning bylaw means. The zoning enforcement officer, the zoning bylaw interpreter, and applies to the bylaw is the building inspector. So I agree with you, I don't read the reference in Section 5.1 of the rules where it talks about evaluating the use as changing or shifting view when you kind of zoning enforcement authority. I think for purposes of this, it's adequate for you to ascertain that based on the information available to you. This should be applied and evaluated as and as of right use, that's based on the information that's been provided, as well as on the building inspector's informal determination, which obviously won't vest into a formal opinion, so there is a building permit application. But the point of that section is simply to call out that you understand that the type of use that's being presented to you, this is being presented to you as an educational use, and educational use is allowed in the zoning picture. And our recommendation is that you process this as and as of right site plan use. Ultimately, if the building inspector has a complete building package for the application, it makes a different decision, then they already additional relief needed. But as of now, I think you have the information necessary to process this, but the important to keep in mind is that nothing in the Planning Board's site plan rules and regulations changes the fact under the zoning bylaw. It is the building inspector's role and responsibility to make zoning determinations, and under state law, which are done, through a legal application.
So may I please respond to that, so.
Yes.
So, but if that letter, or initial finding, if you will, if you want to call it that, is a prerequisite to moving forward, and that's subject to an appeal, is it not premature to move forward?
So that, that letter is not a prerequisite to moving forward, and it's not necessary to have that in order for the Planning Board to do its job. And in my opinion, it's not subject to appeal, because it is an informal, non-final decision, and it's not subject to appeal.
It's the subject of appeal.
Even though it exists, and there was no written opinion given, it would continue to be my opinion that this is being presented to the board as an educational use, and that under the information presented and under their rules and under the bylaw, it is appropriate for the board to process this as an as-of right site plan application.
So if it's not in reliance.
And again, my, you know, my answer here, obviously, are for the benefit of the board. So for Mr. Chairman, I'm answering to you. If members of the public have a question, you know, and you need legal advice, they certainly should consult their own counsel, but for the benefit, you know, that's my take on it.
Yes, and our council's, with COVID at the moment, and isn't present, not qualified as council.
And it sounds like, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt the, there's a little bit of a disconnect on my volume, like, from your sound. You know, it sounds like this is gonna be continued, so it doesn't sound like any decisions being made tonight, like you're thankful of an opportunity to be here, but I just wanted to, you know, for folks that perhaps haven't been to meetings before, just clarify the role of town council, obviously, is to, is to help the board, and you have members of the public, need legal advice, you know, they should definitely consult their attorneys.
Understood. So moving around that, obviously, there's gonna be a number of questions on the heat paths and the weeds, if you will. Would that be, and I direct this to the chair, would that be available at a follow-up continued hearing, where there would be public hearing?
Of course.
Where we can ask about where, for instance, the well is situated? I think that's a huge question.
Absolutely. When, when we reconvene this meeting, anybody can ask anything.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much for your time. Do somebody else?
Yes?
Good to you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
Could you speak into the microphone a little louder? And who are you and where are you from?
My name is Rose White. I'm a butter of property. I live at 415 Old Harbor Road. And I just wanted to say that I support continuing this to the next meeting. My husband and I did submit a letter with some broader concerns, comments, questions. But I did just want to take a minute and pull up a couple of things that I think are, might be helpful to bring up at this point. One of the things that we, in looking at that application, the applicant's application, we noted that there were, that some of the, wanted to think a little bit about use and ask the board again, and looking at the application, to consider the use and encourage the applicant to really put forth some conservative estimates, estimates for sort of the highest intensity use of the, of the site. I mean, just in reading through the application, a couple of things that stood out. I mean, just in reading through the application, a couple of things that stood out were the water usage. An application that noted that they were estimating about six hundred gallons per day, which is about fifty gallons per resident per day. And my thought is industry standard is much closer to seventy-five gallons of water per day. And when you look at that across the number of proposed residents and the number of staff, it actually ends up with an estimate that's about double of what the, what the proposed, what the application includes as a proposed water use. So that was one item. The other one was electrical service. We definitely know that on Old Harbor Road, the electrical service can be unreliable. Question is, is there adequate capacity for the service needed? Will there be a backup generator? And so what size will it be or will it be located? And then I think the last thing to note is the number of trips that are called out in the application. That seemed a little low to us. I think that application includes about eighteen vehicle trips per day. But for a, for nine staff, I think the plan is to have nine staff coming and going throughout the day. It seemed that with all of the visitors and program partners and delivery service calls, it felt like that was, that was pretty low. So that's it. The rest is in the letter that we submitted yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the letter.
Anybody else?
Is the applicant going to be required to provide floor plans showing the...
Could you please come up to the microphone?
Other than the site plan here?
And I know who you are, but...
Representing Ted Canari.
Could you speak into the, get in front of it?
Get behind it or you're gonna get in trouble like you did last time. You okay?
Who you represent?
Ted Canari, who is in the butter to this project.
Ted Carey?
Canari, K-I-N-N-A-R-I. And one of the things that disturbs me about the project is we have a, we have a site plan. In other facilities and for other site plans, especially for commercial ventures such as this, is this is not a nonprofit organization. This board is required and required the applicant to provide architecturals showing that the outside of the building and the interior of the buildings will meet certain requirements. Are the neighbors going to benefit from that in this project? If so, when will the applicant be supplying those? Secondly, we have a boarding, my understanding is this is going to be a residential facility. The letter that was sent to the zoning board of appeals said it is not going to be licensed as an educational facility, but as a treatment facility. I understand that there is a debate, or at least a debate with regards to public need. I am, I am for a treatment facility. But does the board understand that this is going to be housing individuals who are unrelated between the ages of twelve and twenty-six? And as of right now, there has not been a submission of suitability or a determination of suitability of the proposed curriculum by the school committee. I don't believe it's been presented to them yet. So we're jumping through these hoops for an educational facility that's only going to be licensed as a rehabilitation facility and not receiving any details of the educational component. So if this is in fact an educational facility, housing six or more unrelated individuals, then it's going to have to be sprinkled. That's section twenty-six H of the code. Absent from this plan is an underground water storage pen. We have no information on what the fire prevention system is going to be. That's always been required in the, in the, in the commercial applications that I've committed before this board. Secondly, as part of it, this being in a, in a or residential based facility, they're required to, under that statute, the CMR that was cited in the request for an opinion from the zoning enforcement officer, the facility must provide a commercial grade kitchen and commercial facilities suitable to provide three, at least three full meals and snacks twenty-four hours a day to residents. Now, nowhere on this plan have we seen or has the, has the neighborhood been shown what this commercial kitchen will look like, where it's going to be located in the, in the facility, and how a current four-bedroom home is going to be turned into a six-bedroom, a minimum of a six-bedroom home with facilities for twenty-four-hour staffing. So all of those things, they think we're taking an engineering approach to this. We're just asking this, this board to take the same approach they do with, with commercial structures and commercial ventures and ask for the layouts, ask for the floor, floor plan, and ask for all of those things before you can make a real solid determination. Because this goes way beyond drainage. And I just asked the board in anticipation of whatever the situation is, to request the applicant to supply those things as other facilities of a commercial nature and required to supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do you want to motion, Mr. Chair?
So then I would entertain a motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue the public, well, I move to continue the public hearing for four thirty-five Old Harbor Road to February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, six fifteen.
Do you want to do it that, that long in the future?
Yeah, I think especially given the last comments, the comments from the last speaker, I think that might take some time to provide that kind of information.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Again, I think that that kind of information, you know, I thank you, Brian, for bringing that all up, but I still think that's the building department.
Exactly. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, so now we can discuss.
Yeah, I mean, again, thank you for those comments, but that would be the building inspector. We are looking at the site plan review. And, and so basically, our planner has stated that he recommends continuance for this because we've already, we do have stuff from our review consultant that needs to be addressed and go back and forth to take care of what's in front of us. And then once we, once we have everything we need to approve that, things that you've mentioned, that's, that's what comes up.
Well, it may have to do with building envelope, with where you get water supply.
Well, we'll deal with that, but basically, the applicant is, is going at his own peril and spending his own money to get this plan approved. And then it's the building inspector's job to say though, all of those, it's not our job for that. We're, we're here and the applicant's spending his resources to get this plan what we're supposed to do. Then it's the building inspector's job to address Brian's and these other people's comments.
Jim, may I make one other comment before we vote to continue? That, that the applicant used that time to not only address these specific engineering and architectural issues, but also to engage with the community because there's a number of concerns that are outside of our purview, which are, you know, the cause of, of the number of letters that have been received. And so there are issues that the community has legitimate concerns about. Things like what is, are the applicant's plans for future expansion or what his previous experience is, and they've asked for references, things that have all, that have been listed in their letter. So that again, are not within our consideration. So I just want to add that comment.
So the question is, how long do we want to continue it for? The motion made for February twentieth, is that where?
Jim, can we also hear from the applicant before the hearing is continued?
Sure.
About a good date to schedule.
One question, you are asking for architecturals. Is that, am I understanding that right? The board wants to see architecturals and that other information?
We have seen rough architecturals, not detailed, not for the inter, inside of buildings, but for the outside for commercial site plan reviews. So it would be helpful.
Architectural and full plans. I mean, if we get the, the engineering comments, I, two twenty just seems, that's a long time. And we, I don't think we're going to need that amount of time to answer some of these questions.
Can you do it by the sixth then?
Two six, I think we could do it a lot sooner than that. I mean, I, I could see, I could see a month. I don't think two weeks would be enough in case, you know, depending on the peer review. Sometimes that takes several days to get through those comments. And any kind of drainage issue or concerns, that can be days. Some of these other things, you know, in speaking with the talent in state, most of these things that have been mentioned, I think, a month would be enough to clear all of these things up and bring in the information that you're asking for.
So how about January ninth?
I can't be here. I won't be here, but you, you, if you got four, that's good enough.
And don't forget, this is the holidays are coming up. I don't know. I think if you're going to try to engage with the community as well, I mean, it's, I think you should give them a little more, give yourselves a little more time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just add to that. So again, this is the engineering. The building inspector, it's not, it's, John Connell, the engineer, is not going to be dealing with, with, with the stuff that they're asking for, for the building and the kitchens. That's going to be an architect. So that's the next step for the applicant. So, I mean, what I, what I would ask is, let's, as soon as you think you can get it done, your part, John, let's get it in. I mean, I don't think, if you could do it by the next meeting, I'm, I'm up for that. Let, then let the architect deal with the stuff to go to. It's probably going to take them till springtime to get through what they, what they're going to need at that level.
Well, the next meeting is on the twelfth of December. And then the next one after that is the ninth of January and the twenty-third of January. So...
The next meeting is the twelfth of December? That's, I, not that I don't want to try, but I'd be reluctant, honestly. If there are drainage, I don't know what's in that letter, you know, the peer review yet.
Nor do I.
So if I get that, and I know we have other, other days in between that, but I would, that, that's, I'd hate to come in on the twelfth without all the information you really are seeking.
So we're not going to do it for the twelfth. So is any time in January good for everybody else?
The ninth is available.
Okay, so...
I moved it.
Has to be six forty-five because we already have a six fifteen and a six thirty on January night.
So first, we, either we have to vote on John's motion or...
Oh, no, I'll withdraw my motion, so let's start another.
Okay, so...
I move that we continue the meeting to January ninth at six forty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just make one more. That doesn't mean that the architects can't stop working on the stuff that the building inspector needs. Move forward. That way the public can get it. It's likely I could get it in, but I don't, I can't. I don't, I haven't seen the, the letter, so I don't want to light up on like a joke. And again, it's going to be a whole nother level of, the architect's got to deal with that stuff.
So I, I think that you ought to be just aware that the, the issues that we have as the planning board for the site plan review are not the big issues that you have convincing the public that this is an okay use and for them to get behind it instead of against it. So I think you've got your, your work cut out for you. The more information you can give about how this is going to work, who's going to do it, who's going to approve it, who's going to be in charge of it, who's doing what, would very much help everybody decide whether or not this is a good thing or not. So...
I mean, basically, the applicant's moving forward at their own peril, spending their money on this. What's going to happen in the building department is going to happen in the building department if we approve the site plan. That, we're not going to, we have any effect on what happens.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know. We're going to find out after the first day. They had everything fixed up. Picks up what they already fixed up. And so we don't know whether they get down there. If we don't get down there, I'll be here for January ninth.
I mean, they might not, they might not get it.
No noises, no minutes.
So I move that we get it first.
Second.
Lady, sweet majority. Thank you, Robin.